The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special board meeting. We will kick things off with roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Becker.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Leighton Warren.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Vandenhuvel.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
All right, all seven board members are present. The first agenda item and the purpose of our special meeting tonight is the election of school district officers and secretary to the Board of Education. So the way that this process will work is we will go through the list of positions for each position. If someone would like to nominate another member of the board, they can do so. When the, there aren't any more nominations, then Beth will take a voice vote, a roll call vote, rather than voting on the computer. And you can state the name of the person that you would like to vote for if it's a contested position where there's two nominees or more than one. If there's only one, obviously. All right, so the first position is the election of president for the Board of Education. Are there any nominations?
Eric. I would like to nominate Eric Vandenhuvel as president.
Second.
We don't need seconds. Thank you. I should have mentioned that. Are there any other nominations? All right, Beth, we'll take the vote.
Smith.
Hi.
I'm sorry, Don, could you say the name of the person you're voting for?
Eric Vandenhuvel.
Thank you.
You could just say first name.
Warren.
Eric.
Vandenhuvel.
Eric.
Welch.
Eric.
Becker.
Eric.
McCoy.
Eric.
Leighton Warren.
Eric.
All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, let's move on then to the election of vice president. Are there any nominations? Brenda?
I'd like to nominate Laura McCoy.
Any other nominations? Andrew?
I will nominate myself for vice president.
Okay. Any other nominations? All right, Beth, we have two people who are nominated for the position of vice president. Beth, if you could, some discussion? Oh, yeah, sorry. Go ahead. Yes.
My decision to nominate myself reflects the fact that I think it's important when the ability is there to have some institutional knowledge on the top leadership team, I think, to have its very uncommon and perhaps a missed opportunity to have not have at least one of your senior board members be in one of those spots. I also think it's important to have reflected diversity of opinion on various things, such as how hands-on or hands-off to be. So I'll certainly work with whoever the winner is, but I think whether it's me or not, it's important to have at least one of the two be someone with significant years of board experience if such a person's available.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. All right, we'll go through. Beth?
Leighton Warren.
I vote for Laura McCoy.
McCoy.
Vote for Laura McCoy.
Becker.
Andrew Becker.
Smith.
Laura.
Welch.
Laura.
Warren.
Laura.
Vandenhuvel.
Laura. All right, with all votes, I believe it was six to one. Laura, do you accept the position of vice president?
I do, and I appreciate Andrew mentioning that no matter how the outcome is, we're going to work together. I look forward to this, and thank you, Andrew, for saying that.
All right, moving on, election of treasurer, looking for nominations. I'll nominate. Go ahead, Laura.
I'd like to nominate Andrew Becker for treasurer.
Any other nominations? All right, Beth?
Welch.
Andrew.
Becker.
Andrew.
Smith.
Andrew.
Vandenhuvel.
Andrew.
Leighton Warren.
Andrew.
Warren.
Andrew.
McCoy.
Andrew.
All right, Andrew, do you accept the position of treasurer on a seven oh vote? I do. All right, thank you. And finally, election of clerk. Are there any nominations for the position of board clerk? Because I wouldn't nominate Dawn for clerk. Any other nominations? All right, Beth?
Warren.
Dawn.
Becker.
Dawn.
McCoy.
Dawn.
Welch.
Dawn.
Smith.
Dawn.
Leighton Warren.
Dawn.
Vandenhuvel.
Dawn. Dawn, do you accept the position of board clerk?
Just have to sign stuff, right?
Yep, I've heard you got really good handwriting.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you very much. On a vote of seven to zero, the election of Dawn Clerk, Dawn Smith is our clerk, Dawn Clerk. And the last position is the election, election of our secretary of Board of Education. Are there any nominees for the secretary position?
I nominate Beth Jones.
Are there any other nominations? Last chance. All right, Beth, we're set to vote.
She can decline, right?
No.
Leighton Warren.
Beth.
Smith.
Beth.
Warren.
Beth.
Vandenhuvel.
Beth.
Welch.
Beth.
McCoy.
Beth.
Becker.
Beth. All right, Beth, congratulations. Vote is seven to zero, the Secretary Board of Education. All right, then moving on, we have a few school board organization appointments. So these don't require us to have a vote, just different committees that board members serve as liaison to. The first is our legislative liaison. Really, this position helps to keep tabs on what's happening down in Madison as it relates to educational policy. We have resources available to help with that, but looking for a board member who would be interested in serving as our legislative liaison. Is anybody interested in doing that? Again, we don't need the nomination process. We don't need to vote, just somebody who might be interested. Laura Leighton, all right, thank you very much. Then you will be our legislative liaison, and either myself or someone will be in touch to talk about that practice and the updates for board meetings as they come up. Thank you. The next is CISA VII liaison and representative to the annual convention. Is there anybody interested in being our CISA VII liaison? Nancy, thank you very much. Nancy Welsh will be our liaison for CISA VII. The next one is WASB, WASB, which is the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, the delegate. So this is the person who represents our school district at the annual convention and in any other matters regarding WASB. Is there anybody interested in being our WASB?
I would be willing to do that again. I've done that in the past. A lot of it has to do with just availability of who's going to the convention, but I now have four years under my belt, and I feel, you know, I'm willing to do that.
Thank you, Laura. We do have an opportunity to, at another point, to name an alternate. I think after Laura having done this for four years is a good fit, but if we could find somebody else to serve as that alternate and try to bring them into that work, that would be important. So, thank you, Laura. And then the last appointment is for our head start representative. Generally, we look for two people to represent the board in head start meetings. Interested in doing that work?
I've been doing that now for three years, I think, and trustee Sidney Cowell was the second. I've spoken to the, to the people in charge of that as to what they would prefer, and at this point, they would like to have some continuity there. That doesn't really apply to some of these other jobs, but in this particular one, they feel like that is a benefit. So I would be happy to continue with that. In fact, I'm already signed up to do a little bit of training for it, which, and then I would recommend that Nancy join me in that work, that I think she'd be a really good fit for that. That's just, I'll leave it there. See what the rest of you think.
Nancy, is that something you'd be interested in? Does anybody have any objections to any of that? All right, very good. Then our head start representatives will be Laura McCoy and Nancy Welsh. All right, that is the end of our special board meeting with the various appointments. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and that adjourns our special board meeting, and we will transition to our board work session. Josh, are we just keeping the same feed, or are you gonna stop and start?
We're gonna keep it rolling.
Keep it rolling. All right, very good. Transition here for a second.
Could you let me get internet? I can't, I can't see, maybe not.
All right, Laura's getting a little bit of tech support, but we will transition then over to our board work session for the month of April. We took roll call at the start of our special meeting. Just want to point out that we're also joined by Superintendent Steve Merly, along with members of his cabinet, both in person and virtually. We're also joined inner-city student council. Are they here yet? Maybe not. We will be joined here at some point by the vice president of ICSC, Braden Freeburg, along with Isabella Chung from John Dewey Academy of Learning, so they should jump in here quickly. All right, we'll transition then on the agenda right away to the public forum. Beth, just want to confirm that we didn't have anyone registered to call in tonight?
Just the written statement that was.
Yes, we did receive one written statement that was sent to board members ahead of time. All right, well, then that transitions us into our discussion items. We have quite a few items to discuss tonight. First on our list is a finance presentation. I'll throw it over to Superintendent Merly to frame that up for us.
All right, and we are running a little bit ahead of schedule, so I've got Pete working with Bear to see if Mike's in the waiting room and ready to go, so we may need to take that one out of order if he is not queued up just yet. Looks like Pete's still on the phone working on that, so if I could ask for us to move on to our Student Transportation Services presentation, let me just check and make sure. Wait a minute, well, I see Jake, but I don't see Chad yet. You people are a model of efficiency. If we could possibly jump down to, I'm trying to get Pete's attention here, and see if he's ready to go for us to do facility rental fees in our fee schedule, Pete, then when we get Mike on, we'll just transition back to finance.
Sure, Steve, that would be okay. We want to keep the board efficient and productive, and thank you for being ahead of time. That's really good news. I have two items on the work.
Pete, do we, I was just gonna ask, Melissa, do we need to make a motion to take the agenda items out of order?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to move facility rental fees and the 21 fee schedule? Just reorder the agenda? Oh, okay, you want to make that motion?
I make a motion to reorder the agenda.
Does it need to be a little bit? So just say the letters, and we want to move D and E up?
I make a motion.
Mike is up.
I make a motion to reorder the agenda and move items D and E to the top of the order.
Is there a second?
Second.
Take a voice vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, there we go. Sorry for that being a little clunky, but Pete, we'll send it over to you.
You know, I gotta tell you, that's really good that we're early. Thank you. And we want, like I said, we want to make sure that you remain efficient in your board meetings. I have two items. One would be the facility rental agree, or the facility rental rates for the 21-22 school year, and the other one would be the 21-22 fee schedule. So I'll start with the facility rental. So you have a PDF file in your board documents, and the rental fees for the school district have not changed since 2015-2016 school year. And one of the things that our school district auditor had suggested that we do is annual examination of those school fees so that we can properly account for when outside agencies are using our school facilities, as well as sometimes we do things internally, and it's a transfer of Fund X resources to Fund 80. We want to make sure that that resource transfer is done in an appropriate manner. So what we did is we took a look at our rates that hadn't changed since 2015-16, decided internally that a 10% jump, which would be a little bit more consistent with what inflation would, would have been over that time, was a little too steep for our users to experience such a large rate increase from last year to this year. So we decided to go with something more modest, which is a 5% increase. That's what's represented on the sheet ahead of you. In addition to that, though, we decided that we would round to the nearest $5 increment. So some might have gone up a little bit more than 5%, some a little bit less than 5%, but we did that rounding so that we can manage this a little bit more efficiently and effectively. I would say also to the board that there were zero facility rentals last year due to COVID. We hope that in the fall, we're back in business and we're doing things more in a normal fashion, and so that we will be charging then and having outside agencies as well as internal agencies of ours do facility rental, so that, that'll be on the docket for the board meeting in, in May. Any questions about that?
Go ahead, Brenda.
Pete, with, do you have plans moving forward to have more regular incremental increases so that it's not, we're not looking at a six-year spread, and then you can't increase fees 10%?
Yes, that's exactly correct. What we would like to do is an annual look, you know, potentially have something with respect to the CPIU. However, of course, as you all know, the CPIU is very mild. Last year was 1.23%. When you start multiplying things by 1.23, then you get back into the pennies again, and we're trying to avoid those, so we may look at whole-dollar increases or have rationale for when we would stay flat and accumulate a CPIU of maybe 5%, let's say, over the course of a couple of years, and then make that adjustment. So that's something that the board will see on a regular basis going forward.
That sounds good. Thanks, Pete.
Any other questions for Pete on rental rates? All right, Pete, I think we're good on that.
Okay, and then the other thing that I have for you would be the 2021-22 fee schedule, and if you would open up that document as well, you'll see that there are several of the items that are lined out with strike-throughs. And the reason that we presented it in that fashion is there are certain fees that are represented on this fee schedule that are what we would consider waivable. We are asking for the board to consider waiving those fees again, just like you did last year, for the 21-22 school year as a way of extending some additional COVID relief and economic relief to our families as they embark back to our facility for the 21 and 22 school year for in-person instruction that we hope to have five days a week, and start the next school year as normal and have a normal school year. Wouldn't that be nice? But anyway, we're recommending that we do waive the fees again for those general fees. And so all of the ones that are lined out are the ones that are waivable. We do waive those fees for children that do qualify or families that do qualify for free and reduced lunch. However, it's our recommendation to waive them for all students. It's, it's just a lot less confusing. There would still be the non-waivable fees, primarily student parking as well as activity passes, and we're recommending that there be no change to those. Of course, they weren't collected this year because of the online schooling that we had for the majority of the year, but next year, being in person, five days a week at the start of the school year, we would advocate for those fees to go forward unchanged as they had been unchanged in the past. Any questions?
Not seeing any questions. Pete, a lot of head nods. Thanks for bringing that recommendation forward.
And Mr. Merly, I believe that Jake Alderson and Chad Jensen are available, so they could go forward with their presentations if you wish, while we're waiting for Michael Clark, who we had advocated to log on at 5:30.
Thanks, Pete. And yes, I would ask, and I apologize again, though, due to the efficiency of our board work, if you would move to reorder the agenda and move item B in front of item A.
Would we also want to move C as well?
Sure, we can do that, too.
B and C. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda has been modified once more, and we'll go to item B, Student Transportation Services.
Before the gentlemen begin their presentation, I'd just like to say right up front how wonderful it's been to work with both of them, challenging process to do this, the bid in and of itself, but then certainly to do it in this particular environment as we've been working through the pandemic, and Jake and Chad did an absolute fantastic job. So again, before they start the presentation, I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledge the amount of work and the time, energy, and effort they put in. And the floor is yours, gentlemen.
Is the, is the slide deck up?
Would you like me to display that for you, Jake?
If you could, please.
Just one moment. Should be up now.
Terrific. Good evening all. I'm Jake Alderson. I'm the district's director of procurement, and I'm gonna give you an overview of our Student Transportation Services request proposal. Our team for this acquisition included Chad Jensen, our transportation manager, and Pete Ross, our COO. They're also dialed in this evening and available to answer questions. Next slide, please. As you can see from this slide, we've had a long-established relationship with our existing student transportation providers. We've worked with LAMAs for more than 50 years and First Student for more than 15 years. Together, they transport more than 8,000 students daily and provide more than 360 yellow bus runs a day. Next slide, please. So why did we issue a request proposal for Student Transportation Services? Well, the most recent contract was written in 2017, awarding an approximate 50-50 split to LAMAs and First Student, and was for all intents and purposes an extension of previous contracts. In discussion with the CFO and COO, we agreed that in order to ensure the district was receiving the best value, we should issue a new RFP that was publicly advertised and allowed for full and open competition. The new contract will have a base performance period of five years and an option to extend for a sixth, seventh, and eighth year. We issued the RFP with 20 months remaining on our existing contract to allow us enough time to conduct a robust evaluation and to allow enough transition time in the event a new provider or providers were selected. We believe the RFP would ensure highly competitive pricing, provide an opportunity to add new quality standards, require a newer bus fleet with the average age not to exceed eight years, and the oldest buses not to exceed 13 years. And finally, we removed the fuel cost escalator completely. The only fuel reimbursement will be for charter trips that exceed 40 miles. Next slide, please. These are the RFP specifics. We posted it to our cloud platform called Bonfire on the 5th of October. Questions from vendors were due on the 23rd of October. We received 112 unique questions from nine vendors and posted our response within the week, and then proposals were finally due approximately five weeks after that on the 7th of December. We received eight proposals from five vendors. Next slide, please. These are the vendors submitting proposals, First Student, LAMAs Bus Lines, Go Right Way, Central School Bus, and Durham School Services. Next slide, please. As you can see from this slide, our selection criteria was made up of three factors: cost, readiness plan and experience, and vendor references. Cost was weighted at 50% of the total evaluation, with readiness plan and references equally weighted at 25%. We carefully considered what evaluation factors to use for this RFP and settled on these three based on internal discussions regarding the most important elements of the service and market research of other schools within the nation. As you would expect, cost is always an important evaluation factor. In addition, we included vendor prior experience in providing same or similar type services, how they intended to operate with the boundaries of our school district, and what their current and former customers thought of the services they provided their districts. Next slide, please. The five vendors who submitted proposals were all determined to have highly relevant experience as evidenced by them currently providing student transportation services to school districts in the Midwest. Additionally, those vendors not currently operating in the Green Bay area provided possible locations to buy or lease in the event they were selected as one of our vendors. Based on this, each vendor received maximum points for their readiness plan and experience. For the reference portion of the evaluation, each vendor was required to submit a list of recent, which was within the last 10 years, and relevant references. References were evaluated by sending each a questionnaire containing seven questions that respondents were asked to rate on a scale of one to five, with one being unsatisfactory and five being exceptional. After a review of the questionnaires, all vendors scored in the very good range. Next slide, please. This show, this slide shows the cost proposal submitted by the five vendors. As you can see, First Student submitted the lowest overall cost for 100% of the routes and also the lowest proposed cost for 50% of the routes. Next slide, please. So for our recommendation, although First Student proposed the lowest overall price, our recommendation is that we maintain a two-vendor solution. We've been in discussions with LAMAs, and they have agreed to the pricing structure proposed by First Student for the 50% of routes proposal. Maintaining a two-vendor solution provides the district with the maximum flexibility, strengthens our negotiation position over the course of the contract, provides us protections in the event a provider sells the company, goes into bankruptcy, another pandemic hits, or really any other myriad of reasons. Also of importance is the 50-plus-year relationship we've had with LAMAs. They've been invaluable partner to the district. Their commitment to the district was evidenced by their agreement to cut their proposed costs by more than 10% to match First Student's proposed rates. In fact, we received an email late Friday afternoon from First Student indicating they had entered into an agreement for the sale of their company to EQT Infrastructure, one of the world's largest infrastructure investors. While they've assured us this won't affect their commitment to the district, it adds a level of uncertainty that we can hedge against by retaining two vendors. We request the board approve our recommendation for a two-vendor solution, that being LAMAs and First Student, for an estimated cost of $9,841,915.84 plus charter runs for the 2022-2023 school year. And that's the, the presentation for you. Pending any questions you might have.
Jake, thank you very much for going through that. That was great insight. Jake, thank you, uh, very much for going through that. Uh, that was great insight. Uh, one question that I had was related to, uh, the contract. Um, it said it was a five-year contract with the option to renew those additional one years. Is that option to renew, uh, the districts or the companies or is it a mutual?
It's, well, it's ultimately the districts, but we would, it would be, we would mutually, if, if they wanted to perform and we wanted to keep them, then we would renew. If we said we didn't, we weren't happy with the service, we'd like to go out to RFP again, then we always have that option.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, any other questions for Jake and or Chad about the, the transportation? Contracts. Uh, Jake, I would just add one more thing. I think, uh, your rationale that you provided for, uh, having the two vendor solution. Really puts the district in a good spot, protects us in a variety of things that you mentioned. Um, and, and just ensures that both vendors do the very best to transport our students. So, uh, appreciate you bringing that suggestion forward and we will vote to approve at our meeting next month.
Perfect. Thank you.
Oh, did I? Sorry, Steve.
Eric, I'd just like to add, uh, I think that this is a, a really wonderful example of the attention to detail in that RFP process. I've had the opportunity to go through many of these in multiple districts. Uh, and, uh, as you could hear from Jake's report, uh, the work that he and Chad did. Uh, I think really sets the district up, not just in this particular instance, but as we move forward and look at additional RFPs. So again, gentlemen, thank you very much for your time, energy and effort on this.
Thank you.
Steve, on, on behalf of Mr. Clark, I would ask, because he does have a presentation to provide the German Town. School District School Board of Education as well at six thirty today. Could we rearrange the schedule to have Mr. Clark go next?
Absolutely. Uh, I would look, uh, for a motion for someone to move item A to, uh, ahead of item C.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Hi, opposed? Alright, there you have it, Pete. I shouldn't have made that suggestion to move both of those items up. Um, Steve, we'll hand it to you first and then we'll throw it to our guest.
Sounds good. And obviously an opportunity to express our appreciation to Beth. We'll get to do the minutes for this meeting, so. Uh, so, uh, we are, uh, very fortunate tonight. Uh, I don't want to steal any Pete's thunder. Just let you know that, uh, we've got a great relationship with Baird. Uh, and they have been working with us internally as we look, uh, towards the future of the district. Uh, and understand where we're at from a financing standpoint with our debt load, uh, its relationship to the tax mill rate. Uh, and what that means for the district in terms of options that we have, uh, as we look forward over the course of the next, uh, five to ten years. So Pete, I'll turn it over to you and then, uh, from you to Mike.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Steve. And, um, Angie Robley is on as well. And we would be prepared to answer any questions that the board might have either tonight or in the future. Uh, please reach out to either Angie or myself. Um, everything that Mike talks about, we know intimately. And, uh, it's going to be a, I think, a great presentation about, uh, managing the levy. And, uh, taking a look at, uh, opportunities, uh, future opportunities for the district. As well as the defeasance that we've already, um, uh, initiated as a result of the board setting the levy in, in November. Uh, and we're culminating, uh, that activity, that defeasance, which will happen next month. So Mike, if you want to take it away, uh, again, I would just say, long-term relationship with RW Baird. Not only Green Bay schools, but districts that I've been involved in, uh, RW Baird has been, um, uh, walked with us hand in hand the whole time. In any financial matter, uh, with the districts. So that's a great company to work with.
Okay, thanks. Uh, uh, and thank you for accommodating me being, uh. Uh, and why I should th- thank Germantown for setting me up in a conference room. I had to move a little bit because as I went to video, I see that the windows behind me were kind of blocking me out. And, uh, I can't figure out how to cheat, close the screen, so. Um, but I would go through a, a few things, uh, as it pertains to forward looking. But I thought, uh, it would be good to, to start with some kind of refresher, especially since I, I know there are some newer board members. Uh, but I'll introduce myself for those members. Uh, Mike Clark, I've been with Baird for over twenty years. Uh, working with the district for that time period. Um, prior to working at Baird, I worked as a, um. I was assistant superintendent for business for Appleton School District prior to moving to Baird. And I worked for Sheboygan School District prior to that. So I have the, um, the school knowledge from being in schools for eleven years. And then obviously the, the time with Baird, I, I, I worked exclusively with school districts. Uh, for the last twenty years, big districts, small districts. Um, so I think that, that, that knowledge, I think, helps. Helps me better serve the districts I work with, so. But as I said, we're going to start just by looking backwards a little bit. So if you go to the next slide. Here, hopefully you can see it, but I know you, you have the, the presentation yourselves. But I just wanted to kind of refresh everyone's memory as it relates to the defeasance practice and I'll describe what that is. Uh, basically, the defeasance, the defeasance is levying funds to pre-fund future debt payments. And the district has been doing that quite a bit over the last few years. Um, and in, in all, every case, uh, to this point, it has saved the district dollars. Uh, because what happens is these funds sit in an escrow account. Uh, making the interest payment associated with the, the principal that, that's tied to the escrow account. And then paying the full principal off at the earliest possible date. So if it's callable, some debt might get paid three, four, five, six years earlier than scheduled. And that's where the savings is derived. Uh, but in addition to defeas- defeasances, the district has done several refundings. And it, we, again, we have a chart here and I won't go through each one. But, you know, some pretty significant, uh, savings has been, been achieved. And again, when you're dealing with a referendum approved debt, um, the savings is all, uh. Taxpayer savings. In a few of these cases, the, the debt was non-referendum, so it was coming out of the revenue limit. So any savings was able to be redirected into other, uh, operational needs, um, and programming. Or, you know, wherever the dollars may have ended up. But again, the district had the opportunity to, to, to reallocate those dollars. So you can see that there's a nice stream of savings. Obviously, the, the refunding that we did in two thousand nineteen, uh, had substantial savings. And basically that, when we really shortened up a debt issue and paid it off much earlier. Uh, just because of the district doing the defeasances and managing its levy. To, to allow us to do that without any tax rate increase. And we'll, we'll look at, uh, tax rates in a few minutes. Uh, but again, a very nice history of savings, uh, through defeasances as well as refundings. So going to, to this upcoming defeases, if you, thank you. The district will be doing another one. The district levied additional funds in the fall of twenty twenty as part of its overall tax levy. And those funds will be used to, again, defees or pre-fund some existing debt. Now, a- as you do more and more defeasances and the district has less and less debt. The savings potential becomes less and less. You have less principal outstanding. It's outstanding for a shorter period of time. So the savings aren't quite as dramatic as some of the others. But we would anticipate about additional a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of savings. These are preliminary numbers. Uh, you know, until we purchase the securities for the escrow account. And they, again, they have to be government securities, federal government securities. So, um, there's not a great deal of interest to be earned, but there is some. Until we lack those investments, we won't know the final number. But, uh, we're looking at, it will be paying or pre-funding some additional debt. So the full twenty twenty-seven payment will disappear. And then a portion of the, the twenty-sixth payment will disappear. And again, this, this allowed the district last fall to, to, to keep its tax rate fairly stable. Actually, it's still dropped a little bit. And so again, for the book, those who've been on the board in the past, this is nothing new. We've done several of these. But for newer board members, we'll, we'll, we'll be coming back in May with a resolution. The bond council will draft. And the board will approve the resolution to allocate the dollars, additional dollars are levied in Fund Thirty-nine, which is referendum debt account. And use those dollars to pre-fund debt. Uh, that's the only thing those dollars can be used for. So, once that's completed, if, if you go to the next slide, we kind of projected out. Well, if the district continues the practice and they levy the same amount in Fund Thirty-nine. As in, in twenty-one, twenty-two, as it did in twenty twenty-one, what's left? And as, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, there's not a lot. Um, once, if, if the district chooses to do that, again, it's by board action. It's nothing you're required to continue to do. It's an annual decision. Um, but if the district would keep its levy flat in Fund Thirty-nine. Um, pre-fund some additional debt, you can see that there's not a whole lot of savings to be had. It's definitely more of a levy management tool at that point. There'd be an additional twenty-two thousand dollars of savings. That's what we're projecting now. You know, it's, that's not going to be the number. It's going to vary, but it's not going to be as significant as even this year's. But what happens is the district's debt really falls off after that. And if you go to the next slide, it shows it graphically a little bit better. So, so the first columns to the, um. To the left was the twenty-one, excuse me, twenty twenty-one school year. And the, the black line is, was the scheduled levy and the blue line was what we'll call the defeasance levy. And so next year for twenty twenty-one, again, keeping, you keep the Fun Thirty-nine levy flat. Um, the defeasance levy gets a little bit larger and the existing debt levy drops a little bit. Then you see going forward, your remaining debt payments would be the black, the black portions of each line. And then the, the striped black and red portions are the, the debt that's being defeased in this year as well as next year. And you can see that the district's debt really falls off. But if you look at those, uh, lines in twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two. The district is levying over, you know, twenty million dollars in debt for debt payments on an annual basis. And you, going forward, you can see that it would drop to roughly six million dollars. In twenty-two, twenty-three, and then, you know, very s- small amounts thereafter. That debt drop really can't be avoided at some point. There's a few things, maybe we could call some additional or defeat some additional debt in twenty-two, twenty-three, but it'd be relatively small amount. But that's, that's a pretty significant levy drop, which is great. I mean, I mean, if your levy drop set far, you know, the taxpayers would see, you know, a significant drop. But this is the point, and this is something we've talked about with the district. As it, as you reach these. Uh, opportunities or levy drops, um. You know, is, is there, uh, are there things the district consider doing as it relates to those drops? And in the past, you know, uh, much like the last referendum, we were able to. Issue some debt. And again, I, I think that also the operating question tied to it and not have a tax rate increase. And so if that same thought press, process carries forward, here's a pretty significant opportunity. To look at potentially if, if, if the, the district and the board feels there's needs that need to be addressed. That, um, you could again, look at going to the voters and not having a tax rate increase. So in order to do that, um, the district, in this scenario, the district could look at an April twenty-two. Or November twenty-two referendum to fill the drop. An April referendum, uh. Would mean that the district would need to take action by the, about the third week of January in terms of resolutions to, to get on the, the ballot for April. There's also February, I, I don't want to exclude February. I'm kind of partial more so to April, uh, just given historic results for school districts. And then November of twenty-two, there's also an August, which August does not get used very much. So again, I don't want to slight August referendums, but there's only been a handful, just because it's hard to get people's attention. For school referendums over the summer. So I apologize if I, I'm kind of partial to the April and November. So, and didn't mention the February and, and August. But again, those two dates or any, any of those four dates would allow you to. Uh, kind of fill in that drop to some degree or fully, you know, depending on what the extent is. And then, uh. Move forward with, with those projects. And even if it's not a, because obviously given the, the, the amount of the drop. You could ask for a very significant dollar amount. But a lot of times would, uh, to do something on a, a, a very large scale takes time, community engagement. Uh, you know, facility, um, study of some sort typically i- is involved. But the district definitely is in a position where they could look at something on a, on a shorter term basis. You know, could do, you know, maintain that current levy for a three to four-year period of time. To, to address some, uh, nearer term pressing needs that, that are more easily identified. Um, and that would allow the district to, you know, take some time to look at some maybe bigger picture approaches. To their facility utilization and then come back to the voters, you know, potentially in twenty-two. Because, or excuse me, in, in, in twenty-four. And because you also, I need to keep in mind that the district will probably be going back to the voters. For, to renewing potentially the potentials there. But, you know, in most cases, districts aren't able to move away from, um, operating referendums fully. That you'd be going back to the voters potentially in twenty-six for that question. So in terms of timing, it kind of spaces things out every couple of years. But, uh, would allow the district to maybe, uh, a, a smaller referendum. And when I say smaller, we're still talking, you know, pretty significant amount. You could, the district could easily do fifty, sixty million dollars over the next four years, pay it off in four years. Incur very little interest cost because it's paid off in a very short period of time and not have a tax increase. And that would allow the district, as I said, to kind of study larger scope, facility projects. Also look at, um, you know, analyzing the operational needs over the next few years. As it relates to programming, facility needs and position itself then to. Readdress the operating referendum in twenty-six. Um, that's just a thought, you know, that you can combine and, and do referendums. Uh, in the same year, uh, operating in a debt, but you are limited to two ballot questions in a calendar year. So if, if you would ask two questions, let's say April of twenty-two. And you, and no matter if you pass or fail, if you ask two questions, that eliminates the ability to ask a November of twenty-two question. And then in, in, and again, we'll get to it in a minute. We'll show you, but in odd years, there's only, you know, you don't have as many options. There are no fall election dates. So this is something we just want to kind of, you know, make the district aware. Uh, of, of what the future levies look like in terms of debt service. Obviously, we don't know in terms of what the state's going to do as far as the overall budget. Um, for schools, but in terms of debt, you know, there are some opportunities coming up. Um, and what I just laid out isn't nec- isn't necessary recommendation. It was just kind of a, an illustration of what the district could, could choose to do. And, but we also wanted to mention, you know, point out obviously the levy drop. But also that operating renewal, you know, may seem like, seem like a long ways off. Uh, but in reality, it's really not that far from a planning standpoint in terms of. Determining the extent of the need, if any, that the, the district still may have when that operating question comes to. So, if you can go to the next question, please, or slide. And again, the purpose of the defeasance, I thought it'd be good to show the historical tax rate. And again, the defeasances of, you know, not only have, have the result of saving the taxpayers' dollars. And saving the district operational dollars. But also is kind of manage the tax rate. And you can see that over the last few years, it's been holding fairly steady and trending down slightly. Uh, so I think that, um, the, 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 the goal of. Managing that tax rate has definitely been achieved in terms of the defeasances. And if you want to go to the, the, the next slide, please. And again, these are just future election dates, um, you know, to consider and. You know, to consider and, and, um. It's a, you know, just a kind of reminder that again, there are no fall elections in odd years. And, um. The, the elections that, that come up in twenty-two. And the, um, the elections in twenty-four. And then the, the dates would be similar in twenty-six in terms of the, the February, April, August and November, so. And you have to pass your resolutions. They have to be to the municipality seventy days prior to the election date. So that really. Kind of backs up that calendar a little bit as well, so. I think that is it for my slides. At this point, I will, uh, address any questions if there are any.
Any questions for Mike? Mike, I don't, uh, see any questions here in the room. Steve, if you want to.
Sorry, cut you off there. Uh, right. So thanks, Mike, for that. And, and, uh, just as a little bit of foreshadowing, so. Pete and I have been discussing, uh, this issue now for quite a few months. Uh, and what we really want to do is, uh, use, uh, an upcoming, uh, board meeting, uh, to walk you through. Uh, in a little bit more detail, some of those options, uh, that Mike provided to you so that we can start planning ahead. One thing that he didn't add to it is that we know that there's an operating levy that the district has. Um, that will be up for reauthorization too. So we'd like to be very planful about, um, how we prepare. Uh, to ask the community to support work in our facilities area and also to ask for support with our operating levy. Uh, we think we can set a calendar up, uh, that provides that, uh, fiscal responsibility for you as, uh. Stewards of the taxpayers' dollar to help them understand where the needs are in the district and how we might be able to accomplish. Uh, meeting those needs in a way that also is responsive to, uh, taxpayers and the, the, uh, the taxes that they. Provide to support the district. So this is a great setup for that, uh, and hopefully will help give you the grounding and the understanding. When we come forward and start talking about what those options might look like.
Did you say Mike is coming back again next month?
Uh, he's not coming back next month, but Pete and I will be back in front of you talking about the options and, and, uh, what we see as a potential, uh. Calendar for the board to consider over the course of the next five years.
Although, although, uh, I will be bringing the defeasance. To the board in, in May.
So he'll be presenting that. He won't be back talking about this stuff.
Right, correct.
Yep.
Okay. All right, wonderful. Well, Mike, thank you very much, uh, for being with us tonight and, uh, giving us some insight into obviously a very complicated issue. This is, uh. Not the first nor the last, uh, presentation that we'll be looking into school finance. So appreciate your time.
And good luck in Germantown.
Yeah, so I was diving back into the agenda here and, uh, I think we've flipped the whole thing around, but if I remember correctly, we're on. Uh, letter C, Safe Walk and Bike Plan Twenty-Twenty Annual Report.
That is correct. Uh, and Chad Jensen is here, uh, with us. Uh, he was also part of that, uh. Uh, RFP process, uh, for transportation, uh, and, uh. Pete, I'll let you, uh, introduce, uh, Chad if you want to, or Chad, if you're just ready to go, uh, I'll turn it over to the two of you.
Uh, I'll just do a real brief introduction. Chad's new to the district again, uh, Transportation Director, uh, since July. Uh, last summer, and of course, we all know it was COVID time and. Everything that's transpired, and I do have to put a shout out to Chad. He's done a fabulous job. Uh, you know, we, we've said all along that many of us were building the landing gear while we're landing the plane while. Chad was putting the bu- the wheels on the bus while we were trying to figure out how to get kids transported. And he's done a great job. So he's a, a welcome addition to the district and he's done just an outstanding job.
All right, well, Pete, thank you for those kind comments. Um, good evening. Um, I'm just here tonight just to brief, uh, the board. On the Safe Walk and Bike Annual Report. It's something that's brought before you, um. Each year, just to give you a kind of an update. Um, so first thing I'd like to do is just kind of, uh, draw your attention that there is, uh, an attachment that you can, uh, review at your leisure. But I just wanted to, um, give a synopsis of what the committee is for and a couple of the highlights from this past year. Um, so the city's Department of Community and Economic Development sending this, uh, document out or a press release out on May third. Um, so it'll be out and about. It'll also go to the Plan Commission on May tenth. And to the City Council on May eighteenth for an informational review. Uh, no actions needed on this. This is, again, just informational. Um, this group's vision is to provide equitable options that empower all people to walk and bike in our community. Um, the, uh, the roots of it is the group was formed as a collaborative effort, uh, and it was, it's comprised of district staff here. Uh, city staff, technical experts, nonprofit agencies and elected officials. Uh, in, in to look at ways how to seek funding, uh, continue engagement and implement the five E's. And those E's are education, encouragement, engineering, enforcement and evaluation. Um, from the, from the plan with an equity. Equity lens through partnerships, uh, community engagement, accountability and transparency. Uh, the goal is to accelerate change in our community by effectively implementing the goals of the plan. Uh, so the Safe Walk, uh, Bike Plan passed unanimously, unanimously by the Green Bay City Council and the Green Bay. Public School Board, um, in the spring of twenty-nineteen. After a year-long planning and engagement process to collaborate, we established safe walking bike plans for the city. And safe routes to school plan for the district. And I'd like to point out that school plan helps, uh, kids as they walk, uh, to and from school in areas where they're not eligible for busing. Um, so it, it certainly identifies ways to help adults, kids of all ages, ability levels. Um, to make walking and biking part of their daily routines. A couple, um, of the high highlights here, um, that you can find within also, uh, but over two and a half miles of bike lanes were added. In twenty-twenty, uh, it increased the city's total by seventeen percent. Um, it's the city's totals at over seventeen and a half, uh, miles of bike lanes. So I think that's pretty incredible. Um, and these, uh, miles were achieved in, in two, two different ways, uh, road, road reconstruction was done. And lean design, um, with different roadway paint and signs, um. And, um, so a lot of this can be attributed to this group and the efforts that were put in. Um, to get to that point, a couple of the areas, Webster Avenue, a couple of different segments. That was the reconstruction and then also the paint stuff, uh, was on the Radisson Street, North Irwin Street. Uh, Broadway, East Walnut Street, uh, to just, to this kind of recap what, what occurred back then. This previous year in twenty-twenty. Um, now this year, due to the pandemic, uh, the meetings, like all our meetings, um. Have been, uh, through the video conferencing and it's been an unusual year. On a typical year, um, we have a walk to school day in October. And in May, we typically have a bike to school day, um, that are highly, um. Publicized and, uh, brought forward to the community to really get engagement and to bring this forward. Um, so the, uh, bike to school, uh, is still being worked on, but it's going to be kept very low-key just to keep, um. The groups to a small minimum, so there might be some, um, some of that out there, but it's not going to be highly publicized. So we're really looking forward to next year and look, though, hope that it's a normal year. And we can really, um, get the, these things rolling again. And that's the update from this year. Any questions?
Uh, Chad, I'll just, uh, jump in first. Uh, so, um, I was on this, uh, committee. Uh, the Safe Walk and Bike, uh, Committee. Um, I, I'm still on there. Some changes to my work schedule have. Made it so I'm not able to make it to the meetings. I've been on the invites. Um, but just to reference, uh, for, for reference for our board members who are here. Um, there is a binder that this committee, uh, has worked on for years. That highlights every roadway. In and around every one of our schools through the entire district. And it out, like, uh, lays out plans of what needs to get done immediately. What are some? Big hairy audacious goals that we would have if it was completely, um, walk and bike friendly. And it's, it's just fascinating to see the amount of work that went into that. Um, a- and so the work of this committee will go on for a long time and it's really in the, the name of safety. Um, don't have to discuss today, but if there's a, a board member who's interested in taking my place on this committee that's able to make it work. Um, we can have those discussions offline just because. I'm no longer able to make the meetings that are scheduled, but phenomenal work that this group is doing. And if sometime. Uh, you want to take a look at that binder, even just a page through it, it's fascinating to take a look at our city. Um, and see areas that are concerned that our kids are, are navigating, um, every day, so. Go ahead, Laura.
Um, I also took part in the original group that was putting this together before, uh, we, before we passed it. Um, and you're correcting that legions of people had input on this plan and it took place over a number of years. And the work was pretty phenomenal. Um, one of the things I took away at that time. Was that by, by having this plan in place, it would make it possible. Um, to go out for, for the grants by having it, you know, secured. And, and of course, grant money is, is a, is a pretty big part of this, of this, uh, of the, uh, future success of. This plan, um, but also it's just, um, as a citizen who lives in this community. Um, you know, to me, it's always just been proof, you know, that, that, um, the community I live in. Cares very much about the safety and wellness of the citizens who live here. So. It was a big deal when it passed and it's going to continue to be a big deal, um. As, uh, you know, like every time now there's roadwork in our community. They can refer to this plan. What can we do if we're tearing up a, of, up a street? What can we do now? That will make it, um, safer and, uh, and, uh, for bikers and walkers and all that. So, um, you, you know, the, the impact of this work is going to be felt for, you know, generations. Thanks.
Um, there, well, there's a lot of people that put time and into it. Uh, the nonprofit Willow and their executive director Natalie Baumstedt, uh, led a lot of this work. Um, Webster Avenue is a great example. So when they were designing that project originally, there were no bike lanes. Um, they advocated, uh, this group work together to get bike lanes added. Um, so a lot of examples of that where, where improvements happen because we've got a plan and we've got people working together, so. Any other questions for Chad? I don't know if I had any questions there, Chad. I just sort of talked. Appreciate, uh, the effort that you've jumped into on top of everything else. And then to, to take this on and, and represent our district. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
No other questions for Chad? All right. Thanks again, Chad. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right, back on track with our work session agenda. We are now on items. Uh, FG and H, all three of which, um, are policies. Um, so I'll hand those over to Steve, but maybe before I do so. Um, just like to mention and have talked to the board, uh, members about this individually, but. Um, next month at our, our work session, we're going to propose forming committees to do a lot of the board work. Um, in which we can involve more stakeholders in these conversations. Um, one of those committees will be a policy and governance committee. Um, we'll talk more about that, its structure, its purpose and how it will function. Um, but very soon, when policies come to the board table, instead of us, uh, trying to operate here, um, in, in kind of a. Very public way, um, w- without as much input as maybe we would like, uh, in the future, a lot of this work will go to that policy and governance committee. To be able to dig in, do the research, work with the staff. So, um, with that, I'll hand it over to Steve for this discussion today. Um, but really, uh, with being so close to that new model, um, that's where we intend a lot of that in-depth conversation to take place. So Steve, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. Uh, and I'll go through these one at a time, uh, with the opportunity to address any questions that you might have. Um, first one is policy four-four-three-point-one on student. If you've had a chance to take a look at that, you'll note that, uh, there's only one change, uh, and that is all the way at the bottom. Uh, this, uh, had a sunset in it, um, and we would propose removing the sunset. Uh, at this time so that we're able to utilize this policy as we move into the next school year.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Um, yes, first of all, are there, um. There are still no, I mean, I knew there might be some confusion about six o'clock, but there's no student reps here, or there is, I can't see the, I can't. Okay, I just didn't see, I couldn't see the, the zoom. Okay, so. I think it's important for student reps to at least have the chance to weigh in if they'd like to. This, um. This was an ex- before, um. Before COVID, um. Obviously over, overshadowed what we thought a big issue was. This, uh, believe it or not, was the big issue. Of a couple, a couple of years ago, primarily about, um. Primarily about hats and hoods and did it lead to disproportionality and, uh, was there uneven? Rule enforcement across different body types. And that was, that was pretty much, I think, resolved by what's in here. That, um, used a model similar to what, uh. Um, Seattle and some other districts did that basically just said you have to wear a top and you have to. Wear a bottom and you have to have footwear unless the activity calls for not, um. But. We, we postponed not seeing COVID coming. We postponed the. Decision on hats and hoods essentially kicked it over to the, the buildings, but that seems, seems to me to be very. Very unresolved. There were strong feelings on both sides and I don't know how. I don't know how the larger issues of disproportionality and of enforcement and so forth. Um. I understood and voted for the temporary solution of postponing for a year, but. Now to just, in fact, I think I may have been the one to propose the sunset even, but. To me, just striking the sunset and when kids are just barely getting back to school, I think it's worthy of more discussion before we. Just say, okay, yep, this is the permanent policy because it's relatively untested.
Yeah, Andrew, I agree with, oh, did you, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I agree with you, Andrew. Um, I, um, that was my recollection as well. Um, so I would welcome having further discussion on this in committee and to, um. Um, I can vote on this tonight, or I can vote on this when it comes to for us, but I, I would like to. I would like to go back and, and have another look at this as well. Um, there are quite a few, uh, people, I think, that were pretty. Unhappy with our vote and, um, I don't know, it just feels like we should have a little bit more discussion. Thank you.
Go ahead, Steve.
One thing you might want to consider doing then is, uh, just extending the sunset so that the policy then would still be in place at the start of the school year. If the board doesn't have a new policy, um, and then, uh, this would be a, a, a very good policy to take to the policy and governance committee. Um, and then perhaps seek input from students, from staff, from the community, uh, to make sure that. Uh, what's in here is what the board wants, uh, in the classroom. Um, and if not, then there's the opportunity to get that revised. Uh, and, uh, the reason I would say that you might want to consider extending the sunset. Is that it wouldn't put pressure on you, uh, to try to get something rushed through before the start of the school year. Uh, and recognizing where we're at with meetings in public and things like that, it may take some time. To get the kind of feedback that, uh, Director Becker was recommending that, uh, um, we have in order to make a, a good considered decision about the future of the policy.
Eric, this is Melissa. If I can just interject one other point, we're, we are running up against a timeline. Remember the. Just code policies in the student expectation book and those go to the printer in June. So, um, a- as Steve suggested, perhaps extending that expiration may be helpful to give you some more time. But then also to make sure that we're meeting those deadlines for the printing of those expectation books.
Yeah, um, for, for the new board members, um, I think we had a discussion. On this one agenda item for about two hours. I think we had a discussion on this one agenda item for about two hours at at a meeting when we had other pretty major items on the agenda, if I can recall. And I don't think that we resolved or landed in a spot that we all felt good about. It was sort of. This is where we're at. We want to put a pin in it, if you will, which is why the sunset policy is there. That happened. A few months before COVID. So really, since this policy has been in place, there hasn't been a lot of of time in the schools. So I I think that that is a good solution. If we can just extend that date, Policy and Governance Committee is going to launch here and this will probably be one of the first projects that they'll have to take on. Because I don't know that this policy is perfect.
I just wanted to add that when we had the discussion, we did make some, I thought, substantial. Progress about some gendered language in the policy, and I think we all agreed strongly that that needed to go. So and it did, but there's there's some kind of unfinished business that has a feeling of that. So.
Yeah, that's a really good point. The the policy is definitely improved and we were all in agreement on that. It was really the hat and hood issue that. Was causing some hang up and we got a lot of feedback from teachers on both sides and students. So a lot more to unpack there. Certainly changing policies and districts, as Andrew mentioned, across the country. So. If we could just add that sunset, go ahead, Steve.
I think another thing that Director Becker brought forward, which is various further thinking is, as he said, we really haven't had a chance to see it in action this school year. With only essentially a few weeks already and then a few weeks in front of us. And so the board may through the Policy and Governance Committee want to seek input. Immediately or the summer, but they may also want to wait. Into the fall and gather some additional feedback from students and staff and and community at that point in time. After we've actually had a regular start to the school year. So. And I just want to point out, I think the Andrew made a really good point there.
Yeah, I would imagine then the sunset would just be June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Give them a year to work through that.
I'm not sure I'm remembering this correctly, but I. And this may have been with a different policy, but as I recall, we had a policy that we felt was. Not quite ready for June, but we needed to put something in the handbook and we had something. We were going to write in there that said this policy is currently. Under, you know, being looked at and and it's potential that that the policy. Might change through at some point in the school year. I don't know. Do you remember that, Melissa? I don't remember if that was this policy or another one.
It was this policy. The only problem with doing that this time, Brenda, though, is that. That hat and hoodie language is going to expire. So if we don't do anything. The language will expire and then it won't be in the policy instead of extending it for another school year to give you time.
Yeah, and I'm I'm not opposed to extending it. I'm just saying that. If the Policy and Resolution Committee makes a decision in January. Can we change the policy in January even though the handbooks has an old the old policy in it?
Certainly, and we just like the. Last year, when the Title Nine policy had to change after the expectation books were printed, we. Figured out a way to send updates to our families electronically. So it it can be done. My concern is. The language expires this school year. So if you do nothing, then it's gone. And and then that will be a pretty big shift for our students instead of giving yourself some more time.
No, I'm in favor of extending the date. I just. I just I just wanted to make sure that if we extend the date a year, it doesn't mean we can't change the policy in January.
Correct, absolutely.
All right, anyone in opposition if we vote next month on a updated policy that just changes that sunset date, knowing that it'll go to that committee? All right.
The student rep have the hand, is it the hand icon?
It's the mouse.
Is, oh, okay. I wasn't sure if that was a hand raiser. Okay.
Yeah, good, good catch. All right, Steve, we'll go to the next one.
And the next policy is an employee compensation from federal grants. If you've had a chance to take a look at the cover sheet. This is designed to put us in compliance.
Steve, I just on my agenda, I have.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, sorry about that. Jumped over it. So. The next one is the staff use of physical force, physical restraint and seclusion. And this is a compliance one, as is the next one. To ensure that we are fully compliant with federal and state laws. So the changes that have been made to the policy are specifically delineated. Through those regulations, you can see in the rule compared. And the policy compared, you can see the red line versions of that. And again, these are designed to bring us directly in compliance with those those regulations. I do know that there was a concern raised by a member of the community about some of the language that's in there. Melissa's available to talk to us about that, but I just wanted to let you know that the language that's in there comes directly from those regulations.
So I'll just comment on this one specifically as someone who has worked in a school setting in a situation where. Restrain had to be used. It's a pretty traumatic thing. It's traumatic for the student. It's traumatic for the family. It's traumatic for the staff who are involved. So Steve, I appreciate your comments that a lot of the the policy updates here are are mandated. I I don't know if it makes sense to go to the the Policy and Governance Committee at some point as well. You know, the the person in the community who provided us with some feedback and some suggestions. I would just be interested in in what that means. Where do we have flexibility? Because this is a ugly and unfortunate side that we will will always have room to improve every district in the state and in the country. This is a tough issue, so.
And I'd offer that I. One of the, there are two things that I think you need to be aware of when you think about these issues of seclusion or restraint. One is tracking the data. So that we understand where it's happening, when it's happening, why it's happening, to whom it's happening, who's doing it, how often. And then also, what's the training that goes into this? Our staff go through extensive training before they ever find themselves in this situation. That's something that we take very, very seriously, I think. Having the opportunity to be in in front of the Policy and Governance Committee and and walk through. What that looks like pre-implementation. So that both the board and the community better understand the training. I think would help people better understand how this process unfolds. And then I think on the backend, seeing the data and taking a look at it, I think that is your accountability role as a board. To understand the when, the where, the why, the how, and then to consider what implications that may have for the policy in the future.
Sure. Go ahead, Laura.
Steve. Do it. I mean, is there much opportunity for flexibility on this? I mean. Compliance is compliance and, you know, the law is the law, but. A district, you know. Can a district. Put their own. You know, kind of texture onto this policy.
Absolutely, because remember what the state and the federal authorities will tell you what you can do. Right? So that tells you the extent to which you can use seclusion and restraint. The board always has the opportunity to tighten those parameters about when it is used. And that goes again back to that evaluation component. So seeing the data and understanding where, when, why, how, to whom. I think makes the board puts them in a position where you collectively can look at it and say. Federal and state guidelines seem to be working or we have concerns about how this is being implemented and we'd like to tighten that up a little bit. As a board, you have the right to do that.
Go ahead, Andrew.
I I think a couple of things from the. From the public comment. I guess are more maybe easier to answer than. Other ones that are. You know, the request to look in in general at what happens with these kids who are struggling, but I guess I would like to. I share the concerns about the. Possible vagueness unless there's a hard definition that I'm not aware of. I guess I would like to ask about quell a disturbance and what what that means. And could that, you know, I would, that would be one that I would be. Worried that could be taken too lightly. I guess I'm worried if there's any. What what is a disturbance? What isn't?
And I would be happy to go back and look at that in a little bit more detail with Melissa and determine whether or not that language is directly from. The the regulations and if there are operational definitions. If it comes from the the regs and there aren't operational definitions for, we can certainly look into that and see if there's more background on it. And if not, that's something that the board may consider wishing to do moving forward.
Along the. To find this again, along the same lines. The. Question about. The question about three B four in in general, but I can't. So three, three B four to remove a. You know, to remove a disruptive student from school premises or motor vehicle or from school sponsored activities. I certainly could see. Some types of disruptive behavior requiring. You know, possibly requiring a restraint, but. I I guess I'm having a hard time finding where either remove it to remove a disruptive student or to call a disturbance. What types of things would meet that that were not otherwise covered by. Obtaining possession of a weapon, a dangerous object, self-defense, defense of others. Prevent a student from inflicting harm on him him or herself and to protect the safety of others. So. If those are, if those remained there, I guess I would like to know. Why would we need to have? Quell a disturbance or remove a disruptive student in there because I think all the other. Dangerous categories are covered and. You know, we're a. You know, we're a, we're a big place and at any. At any given time, the overwhelming majority of our. Of our staff people are amazing, but you cannot. You can't, you can't step up to the plate and bet perfect on three thousand hires. And that would be my concern, you know, I. Nope, I I removed the disruptive student because he said the S word, right? I mean, do I, again, I I and I don't think the. Virtually any of our staff would would do that for almost zero percent probably, but then. I don't want people to be able, I don't want someone who's a bad actor to be able to point and say, oh, I called a disturbance. And that is. As soon as they allege that, then that would have to be, you know, delved into pretty deeply.
Eric, if I if I can just add, now, remember what we're talking about is the policy. So this is the the broad. Policy language. All of that is addressed then in the rule, which is the adminis, the. Implementation of the language that's in this policy. So remember, we talk about broad concepts in a policy and then the rule is the is the implementation. So I. I appreciate the the individual who commented on the policy and the concerns, but all of that then is addressed in the rule. So. The board then could look at the rule and take the information that's in the rule. And the application of those concerns, I think all of that is going to be addressed in the rule. My my other point that I just want to make and I appreciate the idea of referring this to the committee on. I'm thrilled that we're potentially going to have a policy committee. But we do need to adopt something in at the next meeting. The state law has passed and we need to bring our policy into compliance. So while this may not be the most perfect policy and it what it is is bringing us in compliance. So once we're in compliance and we are. Adhering to what the the new law provides, we certainly can tweak and go back and modify this, but I would just urge the board that. Come May, we do need to pass revisions to this policy.
Go ahead, Andrew.
So could you point me towards where? Where in this rule then it would clarify what is. You know, what's a disturbance and what's not or what's. I guess, again, it comes back to the. You know, where does quell a disturbance or where does, you know, if we're using restraint for a disturbance or for a disruptive student. But I'm assuming. We may all have relatively similar viewpoints on what we wouldn't want that to be used for is where is that in the rule?
Well, first, Andrew, what you you need to do is go back to the to the definitions that are in the policy. And recognize that. Section. Two D is the language on physical restraint and then two F is the language on seclusion. So. Those are example, those are general examples in section. Three B to which you would apply the definition of physical restraint and seclusion as to when it would be appropriate. And then when you look at rule two. I'm sorry, rule one, section two, general conditions for the use of seclusion. And then if you look at section. Three, general conditions for the use of physical restraint. That then talks more specifically on on how that then is implemented. So it's impossible in a policy or a rule to script out. Every single situation where seclusion and restraint would be appropriate or not appropriate. And that is why the policy is more general because we we need to keep it. General because things are are not going to be scripted in school buildings every single day when working with with our students. And we but we we need to follow what is already provided in state law with respect to when it is appropriate and not appropriate to use seclusion and restraint. And I I know Vicky is, I think Vicky is there with you and if Vicky could add anymore to to what I've provided, that might be helpful as well.
Go ahead, Steve.
And I'd also note that one example of that might be on page three in the rule compared in section C. Where it talks about seclusion and it says the covered individual must make a determination that the student's behavior presents a clear, present and imminent risk to the physical safety of the student or others. That's much more in line with the language that Andrew was referring to, which I think does provide a much more specificity than simply calling the disturbance. So I I think that you will find those types of more specific language in the rules.
So what happens if the? What what governs if the? I would imagine the policy, I mean, the policy is what's truly binding, especially if someone claims a conflict between policy and rule. Right? If they said, hey, I used. I was just following the policy and I considered it a disturbance, so I secluded the kid. Now, it says in the rule, you, it says in the rule, behavior. Yep, behavior presents a clear, present, imminent risk, but. Why, why wouldn't that's not so prescriptive? Why would we not put that in the in the policy too?
It is in the policy. It's in the definitions. I I I think it would be helpful between now and in May, if we go back and the board wants to. I I'd be having meet with the board as would Claudia and Vicky and we could talk more in depth as to the exact. Places where you see any disjointment between the policy and the rule, but I I don't believe Andrew has written, there is anything inconsistent between the two.
So I I think that that's. What we're talking about here is the reason, one, why we're going to have a policy and governance committee. Certainly looking at this for the first time for many of board members. This is a pretty important policy, important for us to understand. Policies and rules and how they interact and where they intersect and where they don't. So if if it means we need to approve this policy to be in compliance. I think we can do that. And then I think that, again, this goes to policy and governance pretty quickly. And then would anticipate. And then would anticipate, you know, through that process and cleaning up and then a presentation coming back to the full board of how this plays out. Because I think Andrew's bringing up some good questions, some concerns that came in from someone in our community. I don't think that we're going to dive into it and understand it enough to be able to vote to be in compliance. So, which is why I would, as, as others have recommended, to follow two separate steps here. Go ahead, Laura.
Melissa, I have a question for you. What happens if we're not in compliance on a policy like this?
I don't know, Laura, because we've never not been in compliance.
That's good to know. And I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but, um, I mean, I feel like that gives the, a full proper weight to how important it is to be in compliance when it comes to things like this. So anyway.
Yep. Go ahead, Laura.
I have a few of the questions I had were already answered regarding tracking data and also training that was mentioned. But also in addition to what Andrew's saying, I understand some of the concerns about calling a disturbance. But my concern overall is just, is this disproportionately used as a techniques, you know, a technique for restraint or seclusion disproportionately used against special needs students, students of color. And so how do we ensure that when that gets down further to the implementation of it? That we are proactive and that we are swift in handling if we see something that's, that's being used inappropriately. So those are, those are just my main concerns. I'm looking at this, first thing that came to mind.
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, I, I think, and it was, it was mentioned in the public comment to the, you know, why, why wouldn't we choose to also, to also disaggregate by race? Even though we're not required to, I mean, we can, we have to disaggregate by disability status because that's required. But we can, we can report more. There are some rules about, you know, if a cell size is too small, like it's obscured and so forth. So I guess I would like, if it's going to take longer maybe to do policy language, I would hope it maybe wouldn't take longer for us to just decide to disaggregate reports by, by ethnicity and ethnicity and gender before, even if the rest of it took more time.
That information's already in our student information system, and so we have the opportunity to do that. Again, that goes back to the question that Laura McCoy asked earlier, right? Is what, what are we required to do? And then what is the board allowed to do? And so the board can tighten up seclusion or restraint practices. The board can ask for greater detail in the reporting. Those are all things that are directly within your purview.
And just to be clear, because it sounds backwards, but for the board to tighten up would mean to make it harder to restrain or seclude rather than to make the rules quote unquote stricter. I could see someone watching and, and getting that one backwards. So, good point.
Thank you, Andrew. Yes, that's correct. You could, you could set parameters that I made the implementation of it more restrictive than what is in required policy.
Vicky, would you like to?
I just wanted to be clear, when we train our staff, we train on the rule, not the policy. So it is stricter and we train our staff to err on the side of caution and use clear and imminent danger, the language that across the board is used before you would move to seclusion or restraint.
Thanks, Vicky. Yeah, again, it's a, it's an important topic. It's a difficult topic and a situation for everyone. And I think that the ability to bring this forward today as required to be in compliance gives us the opportunity to then look at the policy and make it better. So. All right. Any other discussion on that policy? All right, Steve.
The last one in that set of three is the employee compensation from federal grants. And this again is a compliance policy and this is designed to provide the district with the greatest latitude in the utilization of grants that come to us from the federal government.
Seems pretty straightforward. Anybody have any feedback on our use of federal grants? All right, we're good with that one. And then I think the last one here, amendment, suspension of board policies, eight thirty and eight sixty.
And again, as we are clearing the pandemic and getting ready for the next school year, we are heavily focused on the work that we're doing with students during summer school. And we are asking for the board to continue to allow us to focus our efforts over the course of the summer on our students and our programs as opposed to utilizing our facilities as is our regular practice for community access. And perhaps I should point out, if you go into the now therefore be resolved, you'll notice that in the first one there, to prohibit the use of district facilities for any use that's not essential, the provision of services to students are not specifically approved through what we are currently using as a collaborative review process. Our intent is that hopefully things are somewhat back to normal in the fall and we're able to resume the regular community utilization of facilities at that time.
Yeah, I, I just, I just paused for a moment because this policy related to the earlier fee and rental policy seemed to be conflicting, but really this is just for the summer. We're having increased summer school, cleaning all of those things. This relates to that time period. If this isn't meant to sound like it's restrictive of our facilities or that we're moving in a direction to not allow the community to use the facilities during non-instructional time. That's not the case. Go ahead, Andrew.
So what, what would be, I guess, this could be written to say that we're not allowing outside group access and rental of buildings. But we're saying more here, we're saying non, non-essential visitors. So what is all included in that? Or what, I mean, I know you can't say all of what's included, but what are some things that would be included as non-essential visitors?
So maybe one good example for you is you think about the fact we'll have kids in during summer school. And so we'll have the students participating in academic and enrichment opportunities during the day. But we're also looking to provide some wraparound care for families that need additional assistance, supervising their kids after the enrichment period is over, but before their workday ends. So we may have some of our partners in doing that. So we would consider that to be an essential service for our students, not done by the district, but done by one of our community partners.
No, I get that. I mean, who, who's, who's the, who are we excluding besides organized rental of space by a outside group?
That's essentially what we're doing at this point in time. So it would be those outside groups that have customarily used space, whether it's gymnasium, auditorium, classrooms, et cetera. And at this point in time, we would hold off on doing that until we reach September.
So it's really clear with number one, but number, number two, I, I guess, a non-essential visitor, that, that one worries me a little that it could be kind of vague.
I can weigh in on that, Andrew. This year, for example, visitors would include individuals from CPS or individuals that are there to provide supports for, for students. Our school-based mental health partners that come in and provide mental health counseling for our students in the school. Those are essential visitors. Unfortunately, we have had to limit the amount of visitors for purposes of ensuring that we don't have any transmission of COVID in our schools. So we are not allowing parents, for example, to come have lunch with their students. Where in the past, under normal circumstances, there would be rules set up in particularly our elementary schools where parents could come have lunch with their students during the lunch hour. Those are the things that we have excluded as not being essential for our students right now.
Oh, go ahead, Steve, sorry.
And I might offer that even volunteers in the classroom, you know, so when, when we look at who's in class with students right now, it's teachers and support staff. We are blessed in this community with many, many people from many organizations or individually who come in and volunteer with our children in the classroom. At this point in time, we have asked them to hold off on those efforts until we get back into regular education next fall.
All right. Any other questions there? All right, we'll move on then. Letter J on our work session agenda is class size. This is something that trustee Becker has brought up over the last few months. Steve, I don't know if you want to speak to this first about kind of the, the plans here.
But I appreciate the, the, this coming forward. I think that one of the things that we've been talking about extensively internally is the allocation of resources. And when we think about resources, we think about our human capital, our people. We also think about the things that we provide in the district, whether that's technology, literacy resources, et cetera. And we would like to have an extensive dialogue with the board about how we develop an adequate and equitable distribution of resources. I've shared with the, the administrative team, the concept of a weighted resource allocation model that would allow us to look at multiple factors and how they differentially impact buildings in the district. And through a process like that to ascertain a better understanding of the need of each individual school and then how we might use that to appropriately assign instructional staff, which would have an immediate and direct impact on the class size issue.
Two things, Steve. Would I be correct in that this issue could go to the education committee? Once that committee was launched and then correct me if I'm wrong, but this is work that you've done in, in previous districts that you've worked with and can bring sort of a similar process for developing that. Is that correct?
So a couple of things on that. First of all, the education committee would be the best place for it because it is something that I think you'll want to get significant input on. That input would come from students, from staff, from community members and an opportunity to understand what that impact might look like. That could take some time to do, having that conversation at a committee table where you can invite those folks to the table to participate in it, I think would provide you in the end, the best opportunity to make a good decision that reflects the needs of the community.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so I guess first of all, in the committee structure, would a, would a policy about class size then get moved out of that and have to go through the policy committee? Or would an education-specific policy be in the education committee?
I would see it coming out of the education committee. I would think the education committee would craft the policy in conjunction with Melissa from a legal standpoint, if we needed anyone in there from operations, they could certainly come in and assist with that. But my presumption would be that the education committee would bring the final recommendation forward to the board.
Okay, and then, you know, I guess this, this, you know, these bigger picture things, the resource allocation model and, and so forth are all good. My initial request for, for a class size policy modification was, I think, a separate and relatively, relatively minor thing. It was to require the board to have a chance to say yes or no. If we were going to have a, a class over thirty in a high school, over twenty-eight in a middle school or over twenty-six in an elementary. And I think that goes, that goes to the, you know, the public, I don't think there's a problem with average class sizes. But I've, you know, I've never had, you know, I've never had a parent call me and say, hey, you know, I know there's thirty-three kids in my kid's class, but I'm just really overall happy that the averages is right. I never intended for that to include, you know, a mid-year addition or a late add of a student. But I guess I think, I think that is a, you know, that is a check and balance as opposed to what we have right now, which is, which is guidelines. And I, I guess I would think too, if the rationale for the administration to have a, a class of thirty-two in a high school is good, that we would have a list of, of waivers and, at the appropriate time. And I would think it would be likely to pass the board. So I guess I don't see what the big problem is with that.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I talked to you about this, Andrew, and, and look, the conversations that I've had with the rest of the board. I think people are excited about having class size conversations and are all interested in what can we do to keep class sizes as low as possible. You know, you've offered that suggestion and I've heard it and they, okay, I think that it has some positive implications. But I think that there's a, a bigger picture when it comes to class size, things like equity and how that puts a scope on things. And I wasn't interested in passing one small policy that could or could not, I don't know, have a greater impact on future policies. So rather than taking a, you know, a ten percent view or, or, you know, not being able to see the forest for the trees, I, I wanted this to obviously be part of a bigger conversation. And certainly we have a plan and maybe that piece becomes part of the, the new policy recommendation, but without getting feedback from more stakeholders, I was, I was personally uncomfortable with it. We did put it on the agenda and if it becomes a motion and the board wants to vote on it next month, we certainly can do that. But I, I think that much like the other things that we discussed tonight, whether it be student dress or seclusion restraint, this warrants more work than just one suggestion and a vote. Go ahead, Brenda.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I'm, I'm in favor of taking the whole comprehensive look at this and not passing a piecemeal policy. I think our staff has done a good job. I think they responded to your concerns last year at, Andrew, about class sizes and worked really hard to even out some of the class sizes that are, I think it was middle school was the, the place where we, we had some bigger classes. And I'm comfortable that they're moving forward and going to continue to do that as best they can. But I, I think it, it's more important to look at it from, through an equity lens rather than just a pure number. Every school gets the same thing.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Steve, I would be curious, do we know how many classes would require border? I, I guess, how many classes are we talking about? I mean, is this, there's twenty classes in the district? Are there a hundred classes in the district? I'm just curious how big of a number we're talking about.
And then I depend on how you define classes. Do band orchestra choir PE fit in here? When I'm talking about regular instructional, you know, core curricular classes. So part of it would be operationally defining what those classes are. It's my understanding that right now there are very few classes that exceed these numbers. I don't have that specific number. Look back to Vicky. I don't know if you or Josh know that number. So.
Laura, did you?
Yes, I know Andrew and I just, we discussed this real briefly, but I think for me being newer to the board, I'd like to see, to see the full picture of where this is coming from, you know, is, I absolutely support the discussion overall equity. But I think I'm just not really seeing a full picture of where the request is coming from or why we would make a decision on if it's been, if it's been an issue, you know, so I would need more information or some sort of, not necessarily a report, but just more, more information to be able to make an informed decision.
Laura.
Um, I think Laura brings up a good point in that we've got three new board, newish board members. And in order for them to be able to buy in, they might need, because the rest of us have had a presentation on class size not that long ago, we did a very, very thorough dive into this and with lots, I mean, we got pretty granular about it. You know, so, but it's been a while, I mean, enough time has gone by, I should say, that. You know, so, but it's been a while, I mean, enough time has gone by, I should say, that maybe we need to revisit and let the newer members. Have a fuller picture because it's very, very, very complicated. And, and you know, the, I remember the presentation coming away from that going, oh, boy. There's a lot more to this, and each school is different, and. You know, so. I would agree that we need, we need to have another look.
The other piece of information that we don't have yet, and we'll talk about this a little bit in the agenda, is what is the effect of virtual going to have on our district? So as we propose having a virtual only pre K through five. What does that do to our overall district in-person enrollment? And do we have to have a virtual class size policy and an in-person class size policy? I'm not suggesting that, but we're about to, we're still in the process of. Reimagining what education looks like in our district and. That's going to be a piece of the puzzle as well. We'll go Andrew and then Brenda.
So my caution on this is that. If, if we don't, and I haven't, I haven't decided if, if I'm. Going to ask for the motion next week or not, but. Usually how this works, given. What I know from history of the district is that this would be. This would be thoroughly discussed, we would have, we would have good presentations with great information. And then we would be left with something where the, the board. Doesn't have a final say on something and therefore cannot. And I'm gonna, you're probably gonna. Now that I'm, three years, you're, you know, I'm probably gonna say it a hundred times at least in three years. Table talk and nodding does not count, it's, I cannot go back to someone in the public who asked me, Andrew, what did you do about class size? Well, we set up, we set up strong, we set up strong guidelines and had a resource model, okay, did you make it so that? I'll not, my kid will not be in a classroom of thirty anymore, well, I can't do that, okay, but did you at least make it that the board has oversight of it, well? Well, we have it on video at the board, that, that doesn't count, there have to be rules that count, and if. If we can come up with some, and certainly having a rule that says you need to have board approval. If over thirty, it doesn't mean that. Make them all twenty nine either, I mean, there can certainly be equity and other reasons like we have now with AGR to be. To be smaller in certain, in certain cases, so. You'll have to forgive me for being a little skeptical that this will come out as an actual. As something that actually has. Some kind of set approval mechanism or rule in it, because that usually hasn't happened, but if, if we can do that going forward, then okay.
Go ahead, Laura.
I have a little bit of a question about, would this be something that. The principal of the school would be responsible to address versus the board?
So if we, if the board goes through and sets a policy for the allocation of resources, then the policy drives. How we allocate those resources. The board could decide to allow for some building level flexibility or not. But again, if that was the case, the board could define what that building level flexibility actually looked like. And, and to Andrew's point. You know, that, that allows you perhaps to be somewhat loose in some areas, but only within certain parameters. So that might allow the, the board. To let the principal flex some resources, but not more than, not less than, right? And that's something that can be very easily written into the policy, I think it addresses. Some of the concerns that Andrew's brought forward, because. While we, while we look at macro distribution of resources across the district and assign those to a building. The board may wish to put in some parameters that allow for. Some level of oversight directly at the building level, and then also I'd say the Andrew's point. From an accountability standpoint, you want us to collect that data and report that back to you. So that you can actually validate that what's happening in the classroom aligns with the board policy. I think that should be an expectation that is not only implicitly understood as a best practice, but is also explicitly laid out the policy.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Not to, not to put someone on the spot, but I'm gonna anyways. Nancy, could you give us just like a high level overview of what class sizes maybe, and I, we're not picking on any one. Person because budgets have been different over these, we have many years of teaching here and. You know, if, if I'm, if I'm wrong and thirty is, thirty is great, tell me, I don't think you're gonna say that.
Thirty, it depends, you know, and as an elementary teacher, if it's between, what's the limit for elementary? Twenty six, if it's between having a split or having twenty seven kids or twenty eight kids, I will go with the twenty eight kids before. Having to do a split, you know, so there's so, so many things that. Contribute to this, and in my years of teaching, like when I was teaching at Tank, we pushed so hard not to have twenty eight kids in the elementary classroom. And it came about a little bit, and, and I understand, you know, there, there's so much to do with class size. But when you're saying this about, you know, what did, how did you say that, Steve, about? Like when you would use the monies differently per school, is that basically like site based management?
Not in the sense that it would simply be distributed, but if, if for instance, there was a determination that. This school had a higher need than this school, then you would say in this school, we're going to have no more than twenty two kids. In a class where this one might tolerate up to twenty four students in a class. But you're allocating the resources again on a macro level. And, but looking at it by building and by classroom level, by grade level.
Something else that happened during my years of teaching was like. If I had twenty seven students, but some of them left for ESL. Or LD or something, that part took away because somebody else was with them. Yet, as a teacher, when they came back to your classroom, you had to give them a lot of. Extra things too, so it's like, you know, I don't know how you're.
But yeah, I mean, the other example that I would give. So last year, my son was in kindergarten and was in one of the largest kindergarten classes in the district. And had a conversation about it with some of the staff early on, and they said, well, we want to see at the beginning of the year where registration falls. Is how many kids say that they're on the list versus how many kids show up day one, had a little bit of an impact. And once those kids kind of came in the door, and then they responded by adding some other support from a monitor in that classroom and working some other things out, so. With the way that it looked in September and the solution that they applied in October, November. Was great, they're monitoring it, it's a flow situation, it's not a static number, the other thing I struggle with. This is being on the board in general, is sitting in this room, trying to pass rules and policies. That impact forty five or however many, you know, all of the buildings and all of the people. And there's so many different nuances and situations like you just described, Nancy, so. I'm fascinated by this conversation, you know, I've talked to Steve and said, I'd love to have a K two and a three five policy, he said, well, why wouldn't you have a policy for each grade level? You know, to say, you know, what kindergartners versus first versus second, you know, so that there's, there's lots to consider, I, I'm interested in really diving into this. And. Go ahead, Brenda.
Yeah, I would say at the, at the middle school and high school level. You know, a policy that's too strict potentially impacts our students because we can't give them the choices they want. Without having to hire another teacher, and then we're weighing and balancing the. You know, do we hire another teacher to have two classes of fifteen or those kinds of things, and I really feel like. The resource allocation model makes, makes so much sense, and then, because you're right, it's, it's, you know, for us to sit here and think we know what's best for each of the schools, I mean, I think that. We have principals that know their teachers, they know their students, they know what their needs are, they know how to mix and match classes so that it's. You know, may look, it may look unequal on paper, but it's very equitable when you talk to the, to the people in the staff, so. I'm looking at something that's, that's like that, as opposed to me dictating a number when I don't really know specifically each school's situation.
Go ahead, Steve.
So I had a couple of thoughts, first, first to Nancy's point, I can vividly remember sitting around the table. With elementary teachers who actually were able to share with us. A perception of how you count children who are in your class part-time, based on the needs that they have when they are in class. And, and they actually collectively, as a group of teachers, made a recommendation about. You know, if a child is in your class, and I think it was. No less than twenty percent of the time, then that was counted towards your class load. So if you had a child who was going through that mainstreaming process and was in a very brief amount of time, okay, we won't count that, but. For the rest of them, they are your children, and so we're going to count those as part of that. And then Brenda, to your point, I can remember listening to high school administrators talk about. The difficulty of changing schedules after they were set. And if you had students who were in a class and it's now too large. You know, how do we go about creating new sections? Because that's a domino and it makes a mess out of the, the kids' schedules, and. So to that point, I, what I, I offer that because. For me, that wasn't me talking in those meetings, that was me listening to teachers and building administrators, helping us understand the nuances of the work that we did. And I think that there would be great benefit for you collectively as a board to hear from them. I think in the end that will make better policy for us as a district.
Go ahead, Laura.
As we have this conversation, a lot of the points that people are making. Kind of bring back memories of this, of this. Presentation that we were given, I want to say a couple of years ago now. Um, this was all discussed at that time and presented to us the complexity of, of, of how we. Decide how many kids are going to be in a classroom, one of the things that I remember taking away from that discussion. Was the impact of. Inner district mobility, like. You know, you could, you could start a year with twenty four kids and end with sixteen. The, the amount of mobility that we have within our district is huge, and kids come and go. Every day, so. That, that was a huge challenge to how you would. You know, how you would go about this work. But I do remember that taking that away from that discussion, so.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so I would have been done, except now I think the. Discussion has circled back around to something I have to address, which is. I will, I cannot allow this to be characterized as Becker is dictating class size numbers because I never proposed, none of you said that. But I don't want it to be characterized as that, because just like we said with other policies, right, this is a. Like thirty, it's a check and balance, so thirty would be a max without approval. And I would, and it's not even approval needed after the year starts if a new kid moves it, so. I just want to make sure that regardless of whether this is. Voted on in this form or not, I'm not going to have it painted as, you know, Becker wants to dictate a hard. A hard class size rule, because obviously if there's. You know, there's certainly, there's times that. I'm sure there's times we would vote seven zero on class size exceptions. And I'm sure there's times that we wouldn't all vote, but I would imagine they would almost all pass if they were presented with rationale, so. Just, just to be clear, that's, that's where I was going with it, and. I just want to make sure that we get out of it with something where the. Public sees the board as having an actual check and balance in the, the process.
All right, looking forward to many more robust discussions on this, so. Anything else last minute before we go on to our next agenda item? All right, very good, moving on to letter K, school start time task force recommendations, before I kick this over to Steve. For the newer board members, Steve wasn't here yet when we started this work. Originally brought forward by. Two former board members, Rhonda Sittencow and Christina Shelton. Put together a task force that was facilitated by CISA seven, we contracted with them, really robust process. To bring forward some start time. Adjustments based upon some of their recommendations. And kind of got tabled because of COVID, and so this has been on Steve's radar and put it on the agenda so that we could resurrect it, so Steve, anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, just knowing that it, it was kind of in full swing when the pandemic struck, and then it, it kind of ground to a halt there as a result of what happened last spring. This is back on the agenda simply to get it back on our radar. And if the board has an interest in revisiting this. We would again recommend that you consider moving this into the education committee, reengage some of the. Folks both at CISA seven, in the medical community, students, parents, et cetera, and determine whether or not this is something the board would like to move forward. We just didn't want to leave it on the back shelf by lacking the attention that we think it deserves.
Go ahead, Laura.
At the time of that task force, I, I did attend some of those meetings, it was a huge group of people. You know, I would recommend maybe inviting. Reed Walsh to come, he was the president, he might be able to kind of. Help remind us of the, of the work that took place during those meetings, there was a lot, I think there was fourteen meetings. Spread over like eight months, something like that, and. And it was very complicated, about eighty percent of the conversation had to do with transportation. And. You know, it would be a shame for it to have that task force, having, have gone through all of that. And to not have some kind of resolution to it, one way or another. So I, I think Steve's recommendation is a good one.
Go ahead, Brenda.
And to piggyback on what Laura just said about inviting Reed Walsh or inviting people, I assume in this committee structure. You, you have your standard committee, but then if we're, if the committee is working on school start, they would invite. People from the committee and, and, and then those people would, would be not on the committee moving forward, they're just there for that specific topic.
The joy of the committee is that the committee chair has the right and the authority to invite anyone to the table that they would like to.
So I feel like we've mentioned this a little bit, we're putting the cart before the horse, but. We're going to have a board retreat on May seventeenth, in which we will propose a committee structure to do a lot of our work. So we've talked about it a lot tonight, if people are watching at home, they may be confused and saying, I don't remember anything about this committee structure. Something that we're looking to launch in June. To help us be more efficient and then really to bring more voices to the table, we can't invite all of those people. Around to have those conversations, we can do that in a committee structure, so. More to come on that and nothing that has been officially, but we've talked about it in just about every agenda item. Or at least the last few, so I just wanted to provide that context. All right, thanks for bringing that back up, a lot of good work there, and we want to make sure that that doesn't get lost. Last agenda item for tonight is GBAP's Forward, one item on there are virtual PK through five elementary school, Steve.
So we're excited about the opportunity to introduce a pre K to five online school. And those of you that are familiar with DPI know that there's a whole process you have to go through. One of the things that we have to do is we have to get an official number for the school. That does require board approval, and so we would ask that at the May meeting. That the board entertain that as a motion. And if the board, from a consensus standpoint, thinks that that is a good idea today, then I'll direct the team to start the application process so that. It's underway, we will finalize or complete that until after the board takes action in May.
One of the things that I talked to Steve about, and it's in the works, whether it's next month or in June, is to get an update from Nancy Short here about what's going to go into that model and what that's going to look like, so. That's coming as well, and you know, it's something that lots of people are interested in. So that's coming as well, uh and, and it's something that lots of people are interested in. So any questions or comments um on that? The other thing that I would add, uh see, you've said this at previous meetings, but uh doing a virtual middle school and high school is a little bit more complicated. Um so we have John Dewey in place right now, um and continued conversations about what this would look like outside of John Dewey, but not ready to launch that for next year.
That's correct, thank you.
Yep. All right, uh Andrew.
Um so we'll have relative, I mean, yes, it has to wait for the board motion, but they're just playing out, there would be um relatively little time to, but enough time to do the um procedure to name this new K five school, which unless, unless it was changed in the two years I was gone, is a contest of fifth grade classrooms to, and there would be enough time to get that in quick. It'd have to be quick. Um so, and that's, that's exciting. And then also, I just want to ask this question before, is everyone so far in uh seven, six, twelve, who wants to be virtual next year, able to be accommodated within charters and so forth?
That's the second one first, and that is, yes, we believe that uh we'll be able to accommodate everybody who asks. Of course, we don't know who's gonna uh make that choice right now, but uh we will be ready for that. Uh and then to your first question for naming, um we're actually going to go with the generic name to start with in the application, because what we would really like to do is allow that first group of students to choose to enroll in the online school um to go through that process of selecting the name for it. Uh and then we would go back and be able to change the official name with the D P I. But um again, just go with a generic name to start with, and then the actual students, the fifth graders in the school would have that opportunity uh to go through that, uh that naming process.
Cool. It's the last time that happened with Red Smith or Minoka.
And, and Red Smith was, Red Smith was really interesting. Because the first, the first recommendation wasn't Red Smith.
What was it?
Uh it was, it was, well, it was going to be, it was going to be uh Jack Cousteau Elementary. And that was right before uh Mr. Cousteau found himself in some controversy. And it was just enough to steer things which sparked a further, which sparked a further conversation about should we try to name, should we have a, give a nudge towards naming locally if we can? And so that's where Smith was another one of the finalists that got um the cup pick.
I can definitely connect the dots uh on how we're discussing the naming of schools. But I, Melissa may be questioning if we're sticking onto our agenda there, but I appreciate that context, Andrew.
Then this would bother Melissa too, but can we make a, make it an agenda item like every month for Andrew to do a historical report like that, because I really enjoyed that.
Um, okay, so any objections to staff getting ready to apply for our virtual P K through five school? All right, um we generally ask any board members, uh we, under this G V A P S Forward, anything related to operations of the pandemic. Board members have a question or something they'd like to discuss during this, to send in ahead of time. Um we didn't receive any this week, but are there uh anything else? Any last minute things? All right, very good, then, uh with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Oh, yes.
I just want to note that this is the first time our entire board and our superintendent and our deputy superintendent and our secretary um have been in the same room at the same time in over a year. And I gotta say that I love it.
Thanks for pointing that out, Laura, it feels good. All right, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Hi, opposed? And that adjourns our work session, thank you so much, everybody, have a great night.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts board of education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, W W W dot G B A P S dot org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.